No, it keeps going out. First of all, we'll have a moment of silent meditation. Okay, and now officially call the meeting to order. If you'd stand, we'll recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Here.
Councilman Stephen White.
Here.
Mayor Kim Harrison Edwards.
Here.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump. Councilman Herb Curtis. Chief Jimmy Settle. Lieutenant Jacob Binney. Municipal fees clerk Kathy Sims. Public Works Director Mike Sterrett. Code Enforcement Officer Marty Lewis. Sanitary Board Director Dee Evans. Legal counsel Stephanie Gandy, Steptown Johnson. City Manager and Finance Manager Joe Solberg here.
And I think I'd like to take this time to introduce Sam Harold with Mountain State Law and Cassie, I can't remember the last name. It's nice to have you both.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, moving to visitors section, the first one is Chris Bailey.
So, because I know we've got a lot of folks, I will try to keep my remarks brief. As you all probably know, I'm Chris Bailey, I'm the Executive Director of the Lewis County Chamber of Commerce, and I am here to talk to you about a new initiative that the chamber is going to put on this year. The board voted to move away, at least for this year, from an annual gala normally held in November, and we are planning an event, small business Christmas event, official title is still TBD. But the focus is really to directly benefit local businesses and, you know, kind of meet our goal of what the chamber does, which is bring people to Weston and Lewis County. Now, the event that we have planned is gonna be on November 28th, the day of the Christmas parade. Be about four or five hours leading up to the parade and really, kind of the way we've, our board, kind of saw was a way to transform downtown into that Hallmark movie atmosphere. So, if you think about it, it's very similar to what Miracle on Main Street was doing before, but we hope to kind of take that concept and take it a little bit further. Some of the concepts that we're exploring is, you know, really getting a lot more vendor, vendor involvement, namely from our businesses, and really establish multiple touchpoints throughout all of downtown, not just in certain places, but to really spread this so that if you're coming to Weston and that lead up to the parade, you're at, you're really getting to see more of it from, say, down Hardhouse to West Hall to those types of places. So, people are getting, moving about, so, which will really maximum exposure for member businesses and our other organizations here in town. So, another idea was to have a Christmas tree stroll where businesses would sponsor and decorate trees, and community vote would vote throughout the season, which would again create ongoing engagement and foot traffic. And, you know, since we are, the gala was sort of the fundraising component for the chamber, we still want to include some type of fundraising component to it, whether it's a gift card, cash raffle. But the whole point is to keep, keep our dollars local and to invest them into what the chamber, what our chamber members do best. And the core of our membership, which is small businesses. And something we've talked about this year is to take that Lewis County Under the Year Award and truly make it Lewis County Under the Year, so that it's a vote, typically in the past, we've done it so that the, the board has, you know, voted finally toward who that would be. We want to make that a Lewis County thing. If you're a Lewis County Under the Year, then all of Lewis County should be able to vote on you. So, we're, the key point is, I want to emphasize this, is we're, we're doing a very quick pivot. We're still in the planning stage, we're still accepting new ideas for the next couple of weeks, and we look forward to city collaboration. Now, at this time, we don't see any major street closures, except for perhaps Water Street, if we, to do food vendors or things like that. But, and again, the whole point of this is not to eclipse the parade or compete with the parade, it's to enhance the parade and the fact that we have everybody coming downtown. So, now, in order to make this work, I think, you know, I think it's really important to speak to a continued collaboration between the chamber and the city. Now, we've, I've been working, I've had office space inside the city building for the last few years, and I deeply appreciate the chamber, deeply appreciates you all, you know, giving us that, giving us the space. And we've seen the positive developments that the city has had, that, what your decisions have had. And honestly, the people driving those developments. And, you know, for this collaboration to work, you know, I just want to speak to the relationship I've had with Laura Anderson. Because I think, I, to me, that when, for something like this to be pulled off, she and her work, you know, doing community, rallying community support, the communications work that she does, you know, in so many different ways, I see it, and it's absolutely invaluable to, I think, from a business standpoint. Our businesses need it, and though I know that there's been a first reading for this role, and that's essential work. You need this role in order to make Weston thrive and succeed. So, I wholeheartedly, and the chamber wholeheartedly supports the creation of this role, and I hope you certainly do. Her energy and experience is absolutely vital for this role. And I look forward to, no matter what we do, for a continued partnership with City of Weston. So, thank you, and I'll turn that over. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, next, Ray Smith.
Well, between Chris's jacket and my tie, we almost get to.
You almost look as good as Joe.
May I should give you my tie? Anyways, I'm Ray Smith, I'm the Director of the Lewis County Economic Development Authority. I appreciate the time here. Like he said, you've got a letter in front of you. One thing I do want to point out, the EDA appreciates the council and Weston sanitary working with us, allowing us a meeting to other discussions. It means a lot to us to be able to collaborate on many things, we do appreciate that. When we heard, you know, we've been in the talks and that stuff, when West Virginia American Water offered to evaluate Weston sanitary, at our last EDA board meeting, we discussed it, and they wanted me to put together a letter of support, which I would now read. Please understand that I write way more eloquently than I read or speak, but I'll read the letter out. City Weston, Weston sanitary board. Dear members of the city council and Weston sanitary board, over the past several years, we've, we've had the opportunity to attend numerous Weston sanitary, sanitary board meetings as well as city council meetings. It is clear that both entities are committed doing their best for the citizens of Weston, working diligently to improve services, protect your responsibilities, and plan for a strong future for the community. With this commitment in mind, the Lewis County Development Authority wishes to express its support for allowing West Virginia American Water to conduct evaluation of the Weston sanitary system. This matter, matter was formally considered by the board. At its recent meeting, where members voted unanimously in favor of issuing a letter of support, with the exception of Mayor Harris Edwards, who abstained from the vote. We understand it is not an offer, offer to purchase the system, but rather opportunity for an experienced utility to provide an independent review. A outside evaluation can serve as a valuable tool, offering objective insight into the condition of the system and its assets, while also identifying potential opportunity for improvement. Should West Virginia American Water ultimately pursue an offer, we believe there is ample room for meaningful discussion. This can include projects the city or sanitary board wishes to undertake, infrastructure improvements that are needed, potential areas for system expansion, and other operational aspects that could remain under local input through a city advisory board. As we view this opportunity together, we view this as an opportunity to gather valuable information that will help guide decision-making for long-term benefits of Weston residents. If you ever wish, ever like to meet and discuss further, I'd be glad to do so. I want to thank you for your continuous dedication, and we appreciate your thoughtful considerations request. Ray Smith, Executive Director, Lewis County Economic Development Authority. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray.
Next, Vince Ryder. Betty Brooks.
First of all, I'm gonna cover like three things, okay, so you can just mark them off your agenda. I wanted to thank Debbie Gump, which is our councilperson, and the street department for handling an ongoing problem for the last three years in the alley. They got it taken care of. The next item is, I would like to invite everyone to the Neighborhood Watch Picnic, which will be Saturday, the 6th, at 8:55 Walnut Street. We're having the Cowboys of Gasaway to perform, there's lots of food, we hope everybody comes. Okay, and then, that's under M. They need to bring a lawn chair, and the street fire EMS and the police departments, they do not have to bring a covered dish, okay, that's all taken care of. And nobody really has to bring a covered dish, it's if you want to. But anyway, yes, and that's under M, so we can like take that one off. And then, number three, we have a street closing on there, and it is under new business on C. And it's about the Harvest Festival, we wanted to get permission to close. And the reason that we're doing this early is because our next meeting, we have to turn it into the Department of Highways, and I've already got the application filled out, it's just that they're waiting on a signature. And I don't know who has to sign it, but our chief is out on vacation until the 8th. So, I don't know if it goes through council or whatever. But anyway, we need that, because I think our next meeting is, is it Sunday? So, we have to know something. The other thing is, just because we're having the Harvest Festival this year, we're rotating. Next year is Miracle on Main, we're not giving it up by no means. It's just we're trying to rotate because of the weather conditions. And also the vendors, some of them are really booked up, and they have other places that they have to be because we got a late start. So, we don't want to take away from the other cities and stuff, we don't want to have everything on the same day. So, weather permitting, we're still gonna go ahead with the picnic, rain or shine, I guess. I mean, we're gonna have canopies and stuff. And I hope that you give us the go-ahead on the Harvest Festival closing. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next, Larry Haddix.
Mayor Council, thank you once again for allowing us to be here. Again, I'd like to discuss trick or treat with you, and I don't know if you have noticed, but we would like to have trick or treat on Halloween night, the 31st. So, I didn't know how you all wanted to work this. I've talked to an awful lot of people that said, maybe this should be just trick or treat. But then we can also have trick or treat from 6 to 7, and we can have trick or treat from 6:30 to 10. So, but I appreciate your input, and I very much appreciate the police department that were there helping us last year. It was amazing. Nobody gave anybody any flack when you see a guy there in uniform. So, I appreciate that and ask for that help again on the 31st, if we can do that. And again, I think we, hopefully we reverse them well enough that, you know, they found it worthy of their while to be there. But I just didn't know what your comments were. Of course, this will be on a Friday, there are some situations there that we have to overcome because there will still be school that day. So, we're gonna be setting up after the buses have left, and we're notifying all of our vendors and everything of that. You know, you can't really set up between the hours of 2 and 4. You need to set up before, you can set up after, those types of things. But I do need Joe's signature on a couple pieces of paper, three or four times, and I need a copy of the insurance, so I can get that to the board. I've already covered it with the school, they have nothing scheduled. They said we have the field for that entire day. So, with your all's blessings, I hope that it gets just bigger and better every year. Comments or questions?
Thank you for everything you do each year and putting it together, it's no small feat.
We gave out over 3,000 tickets last year, and that didn't go to adults. I mean, that just went, well, and I don't know how many of them went through twice. We don't know that, but that was basically 12 and under. So, I mean, it, it's been big, it gets bigger every year. Whether it'll be great. We have people from Buchanan and Sutton and Clarksburg and Bridgeport, they've already made their phone calls. And some of the vendors and things like that, so, well, we're depending on the 31st, but again, we won't give out anything until you are happy with that too.
Okay.
So, all righty, so if it might.
Thanks for coming.
Pick up that form tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Renee Smith.
Hi. Hi. I don't live in the city, I live in the county, and this all blew everybody's minds. Not only me, but a lot of people with this new fire fee. I'm not opposed to the fire department getting more money. I, I think 90% of Lewis County feels that way, that they need more. But for the jump from $20 to 157 was a big jump, and then for the businesses to go from $50 to some into the thousands of dollars, the consumer is the one who's going to pay for this, 110%. And I understand that we have a lot of wrecks that the fire department needs to go to. I would really like to have, and I know you knew I was gonna be here to ask for a breakdown of how many car wrecks we have, how many fires we have, and that sort of thing. Because John Smith on the Facebook, who's representing someone through the city or through the fire department, has been doing this quite a bit of speaking for you guys and making statements. So, I'm here to tell you that some of the statements that are being made, you probably need to go look at, because I've checked on them, like a statement that was made that if we don't pay the fire fee, we could possibly lose our homeowner's insurance because we don't pay our due fee, not true. If, since they have a tanker now, that means they can get to us sooner. Found out they don't have tanker, I lost a home in 91. I know what losing a home is like. And like the fire marshal said to me, it wouldn't matter if I paid $50 or $5,000 a year, you're not gonna save my home. And when this whole fire fee started, whenever it was, 23, 24, whatever it was, I never involved myself, because I live in the county, just like a lot of other people. And then I heard that it went out 33, but never on the side road. So, nobody ever had anything to do with it, thought anything about it, until I think you or somebody posted on Facebook about it gonna happen. Okay, I mean, it was one of you. But, you know, somebody had posted on it, and then we all started thinking, you know, hey, is it us? Then we started making phone calls to find out, is it us? Then we find out it is, we don't even have water in our area. You know, they have to go to the dam is the closest place. I know, there's a two-inch, before anybody says anything, there's a two-inch fire thingy over on the other side of the hill that don't do us a hill of good whenever it comes to a fire. You know, the other side has water, but they don't have sewage, and they're all upset because now they have this big fee that they're having to pay. So, I did a lot of phone calls, and I talked to a fireman, he called me, he's sitting in the room, and answered a lot of phone calls, a lot of messages, I mean, a lot of questions after I called the fire marshal's office. And I did look up the law, and the law says that this had to be in place June 30th, 2024. I have went back through your all's minutes, I can't find it nowhere. But I did find in the minutes, March 3rd, 2025, under the fireman's information, about how he was in Charleston and given update of what was going on in legislature. That was in March, and then bang, we get a bill. We in the county had no say-so. We didn't even sign the petition because it did not involve us. Then we hear now, well, the petition. Then we hear now, well, the petition was done. You couldn't have signed anyhow. You couldn't even come in here and said anything because your words don't mean nothing. But our money sure does. Do you know how that makes us feel? Towards you guys? Towards the Fire Department? The Fire Department, the EMS, everybody needs our support. This kind of stuff is not getting us the support you need. You know, people are doing investigations right now, talking to lawyers and stuff like this because of the way it was handled. I feel like you guys sitting here as a community could have said, hey, this is going on. This is going to affect the following areas. How hard would that have been? Those of us who live out in the county had no idea. None. But it really is a bad taste right now in our mouths that you guys did not consider us as a whole, that you considered an entity. But you also, I feel like you could have said, okay, this fee is also going to help our police officers. It's also going to help our EMS. It's also going to help, you know, our protection completely. Because every time I hear anything, somebody wants to use the word protection. You're going to have fire protection, okay? But how many of that fire protection is helping people out here on the interstate? That has nothing to do with Lewis County. And the words were said to me, we don't need to bill the individuals now. We just need to bill commercial because you guys are going to take up the slack of what we need. Is that fair to you? I don't think so. I don't think it's fair to you, any of you that live out in the county or even in the city for that matter. This is wrong. Re-think it. Come up with a plan that says, okay, this year we're going to go to $50, okay? Then next year we're going to address it and go up more. Give it gradual, but to go from $20 to 157? That was a big jump on people. I know elderly people that was so upset for days that she was beside herself. We all couldn't talk to her because she was livid. When their own fixed incomes, they've only got so much money. And I don't know that that was taken in consideration. And now she says, what am I going to do? Because all these businesses, Walmart out here, for instance, theirs went up, who knows how much, you know? So there means our groceries are going to go up. She said, this is going to hurt me. It might benefit them, but it's going to hurt me. And I was told also that you could find on the minutes, how many calls that the Fire Department made, what it was to, so on and so forth. I've went through your minutes. Thank you for helping me today figure out this.
Ma'am, excuse me for interrupting. We do want to hear you, but we do have a five minute limit.
That's fine.
So I do want to say to you that the end, at the end of everyone's comments this evening about the fire fee, our city manager is going to speak about that issue. And we'll have some information to share if you don't mind staying around.
Sure. No problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pamela Lance.
Pick up where she left off.
All right.
Well, I myself, I spoke to the Fire Chief himself. Okay, and he told me, do what you want to do, pay it or not pay it. Yeah, you said, do what you feel you need to do. I'm going to be 70 years old in November. I'm still working just to pay my bills, okay? And now I have $157 more to pay. I had cancer that I have to deal with, breast cancer. Now all those bills plus my medication, everything, I'm on a fixed income. Other than now, I have to, I had to go back to work at St. Pat's. So what I want to know is since you are getting all of this money, $157 from all of us, when I bought my property, Walkerville was my Fire Department. Walkerville is no longer my Fire Department. I found out when I got my mail. Because first due fire fees come to me, I had no idea that it even existed. And this is upsetting. How are we supposed to live? Can you tell me that, Kim? Can you tell, can any of you tell us, senior citizens, how we're going to pay for our medication? Maybe pay for food and pay all this money? And I want to know, since they're getting all of this money, the $20 fee is still going to come out for the other people, but they're still going to get money. How is that fair to the other Fire Departments? Are you just trying to put them out of business? I was told that they're in compliance with everything, and I'm sure they are. And I was told that Walkerville was out of compliance, and I proved that wrong. I was told that Walkerville was out of compliance. It might have not been you, but I was told that. So I, I just want you to know that I can't vote in your city elections because I live on Little Skin Creek. And now I've been pulled into the first due. Okay? And I know it seems boring to you guys because you're just kind of sitting there looking at me. But it's really important to us. And I don't know, I don't know why they're still going to get money from the $20 fees from the people who are not in the first due area that was remapped. And the other Fire Departments are not going to get any of this new money that's coming in. So we need some answers and we need to know why.
I'll try to give you those answers. Thank you. Bill Pratt.
Good evening.
Hi, Bill.
I wasn't going to speak. I thought there was just a restor to sign up who was attending. But after hearing these other people from the outside the county speak on this, I would say I just wanted to see the faces that would implement such a far fee on us. I agree, our departments needing money for equipment, for apparatuses, for training. I understand that. But you all went around about and slid it through. And so I don't think it's, because it wasn't much published before this, you know, a year ago. And I went in, I've been talking to Joel and we've been working on things and I'm willing to work with you all. But the way you did it was wrong. And I just wanted to look at the faces that would do that to these people. Rental houses, I've got five or six of them. Yes, that's $236. I'm just going to pass it on. Let them deal with it. Because I'm, I'm, I hit a little niche. I don't have fancy houses. I hit a niche here where just a common person can make a living and have a house living with, with, keep the rain off of them. But what you all did, I'm ashamed of you all to put that on. I had no representation. And what I'm wondering from now, let's say this is, I know there's some things going on that maybe things might be changed. But what I'm wondering about is in the future, when I see Fire Departments, I know they're proud of their, their machinery and equipment and everything. But then to me, they're wasting money when they're going in parades and stuff like that, out of town to other places. How is me as an outside that cannot vote? I had a house in town one time and that I rented out. But after dealing with the municipal fee and the far fee and inspector and everything, I thought I didn't want none of that. That's why we moved out of town. You wonder why the city doesn't have business, why they're moving out? You, two, two men, you could give them $10,000 each. One can turn that into 20, one could be in debt. It's mismanagement in here somewhere and maybe has been for a long time. I agree that, you know, an ample amount of money, but be divided among the Fire Departments. I know some Fire Departments don't come out on calls as well as Weston does. But they could have been a little different about the way of going to. So that's all I had to say. Wasn't going to say nothing, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, Bill. I can't read the next name. Can you, right there? Corey, is that right? No? Okay. Eric something? That's you? No? Okay. Nate Stansberry? I don't know that guy.
You know, I was just saying, I don't recognize.
Renee, nice to meet you. We've talked a lot on Facebook the last couple of weeks, haven't we? First of all, I just wanted to thank you all for, for your service and being here tonight. I really came tonight because I wanted to speak to the sanitary consideration. And I, I've been gone and I came back to my house and I had two notices for rate increases for my trash bill and for my water bill. And I think everybody sits here and I think common knowledge is that we can't do anything about that because they're private companies and we just get the service that we get, right? But I think when you read the state code, the city of Weston has a lot of authority to, to, to provide those services to their constituents. Especially when it comes to the sanitary services, sanitation services. When we worked on the, the comprehensive plan, we talked about examining that rate structure and whether we could do it cheaper or not. And I think that did make it into the final plan. And so I, one, I'm here to encourage you, I think now Mountain State Waste, back in the old days, it was Weston Transfer and it was, it was our friends and neighbors running it. It sold out to Mountain State Waste and now it's been sold out to John Casella and the boys up in Rutland in Vermont, which I used to drink a little bit with back when I lived in Rutland, Vermont. But they're good people and it's a good company. But I still think that inevitably, when it's a private utility like that, that the model is, is that their profits are going to get shipped off to their shareholders and to the corporate people who, who run the company in some far off place. There's no reason we couldn't have those profits staying here and having a better service and paying local people to do the work and supporting our, our organization. So I'm, I'm here to implore, implore you to explore those options before it becomes even more untenable, more expensive. But I will speak to the fire fee just briefly since I'm here. One point I want to make to you all is that I think there's a little bit of history here with the fire fees that I had learned myself while I was doing this, then looking through the minutes. And Weston has had the responsibility of serving this first due area since maybe the early 90s, maybe time before that. They, they passed the first due fire fee then and tried to take responsibility for the cost of the service. There was much public outcry in the county and they reneged or repealed their, their first due fee and instituted a county fire fee at $20 and $50. We all went together to do that. Since then, that fee has never been increased since 1991. And I think if you've been alive during that time period, everything else has gone up in that time period. And I think that, you know, when I hear, hear the sympathetic calls for let's work together, I would sit there and say, where have you been for the last 30 years? And I mean that as nice as I can, but I think it behooved the Weston Fire Department to act when the area that they are liable for responding to, they have a liability there and they have to, to take that on. And so, yeah, people like to say that, well, I didn't get a chance to vote. Yes, you did get a chance to vote. You voted for, you voted for your county commissioners. You voted for your state representatives that have formed the system that you live in. And if you don't like that system, that's the way you can get out from under it, is to lobby them to do something differently. Our efforts, when I was here, those efforts were not listened to and they still weren't to this day. So I think that you've got the representation you voted for and this is where it's led you. Annexation has been denied multiple times over the, over the last few years. Now the state legislature has changed it where we can't even annex the big corporations that should be paying our fire fee for us, paying those businesses taxes that support these services in other communities. And now we're stuck with the system we're at, we're in, you know? If we all got together and said, we didn't like that system and we implored our legislative change, maybe things would change. But when we went to the, the community and asked them to consider annexation, it was a big HE double hockey sticks, no, from the, from the folks. And so I think, I warned them, yeah, personally, I was there that night. I warned them. I said, these things have to be paid for. They're critical services, one way or the other. And it's going to either be this or it's going to be a fire fee. And people said, they don't care what it is. Get the heck out of here. And I'm paraphrasing, but that's basically what was said. So I think you did have representation. All these things got advertised in the newspaper. If you're not a subscriber to the Weston Democrat, I understand. It's pretty, pretty lightweight anymore. Speaking to you, Democrat. But, but, and it should have gotten more coverage than it did. But I think we, we followed the law. We advertised and gave the notices like we should have. So, you know, these things have, we've done things legal and we sneak things by it. No, we didn't. We were very honest about what we were doing. We had the meeting. We explained it to everybody.
To answer your question about 1991.
My five minutes, so, but we can talk. But I'm just, I'm speaking to my time. But anyhow, I just want to reiterate again that I think that tonight, tonight you're considering American Water for there to look through our sewer system. I think, you know, at, at face value, that's not a huge deal. At the end of the day, yeah, you could do it. But I don't like where it leads. And I think where ultimately it leads is if there's an acquisition by American Water, our rates are going to go up. They've continued to go, go up. I think there's study after study that show that American Water, you know, they're, they're way more expensive than they have to be. From a market rate standpoint, we can look no further than Buchanan to see how cheap our water could be if we had control of it. And it's a shame in 1922, when we had the option to buy it, that we didn't. And I hope that you guys get down the road someday and explore that option to see what your options are to, to bring water back to Weston and the control of it, to, to local control and not far off shareholders. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Hey, there's one more name on here and I, it's Robert, Robert something. It's not, I don't think it's Bob.
Sure.
I think they thought they were signing him there.
Okay. All right. Okay, next on the agenda, approval of minutes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry.
All right, I wrote, I wrote down a few of the questions so that maybe I could respond to them. First, I'll invite Stephanie, our legal counsel, and I'll pass the microphone down here. There's been a lot of questions about the, when the ordinance was passed and whether or not it was truly effective before July 1. So we kick that to outside legal counsel to make sure that interior, that internally we were interpreting things correctly. And I'll invite Stephanie from Steph Tony Johnson to speak to that now.
Joe mentioned we were retained to evaluate the effective date of the ordinance. And the review of that determined that the ordinance was effective on June 16th, 2024. And that nothing's been done since that time to change that effective date.
Thank you. A few other things I'll speak to. I think there was a question about billing insurance. Weston VFD does still bill insurance. There is a limit to how much they can bill. And probably roughly half of those bills that they send out ultimately don't get paid. But that does raise, depending on the year, anywhere between $10,000 and $20,000 a year. Unfortunately, 10,000, between $10,000 and $20,000 a year is not enough to run a Fire Department on its own. At this time, I think the intention is to continue to bill insurance when it is appropriate to do so. We don't bill insurance when the party involved is a resident of Lewis County. Folks probably think that a lot of the accidents that the Fire Department responds to are folks from Florida. And I think their reality is that there are more folks in those accidents from Lewis County than folks realize. Something I think, just to remind everybody that, that the council did take under consideration, the, and the administration took under consideration the hardship of taking on a new payment. And that's why all of, all of the bills were moved from being an annual bill to being a monthly bill. Right now, that's actually a benefit that county payers are getting, that city payers aren't yet getting. City payers who pay city municipal fees still have to come in and request a payment plan. I think that's probably going to change in the next couple of years. But right now county payers are getting that benefit of automatically being on an interest free payment plan with the monthly billing that even city payers are not getting. There's a question about the county fire fee. Will the county fire fee still be split six ways? Will the Weston Fire Department still get part of that $20 county fire fee? Or will it be split five ways? And the short answer is, we don't know the answer to that because we don't control it. It's a county commission decision. I don't think that they've indicated publicly whether or not they plan to split that fire fee five ways or six ways. It's been our working assumption that they're going to begin splitting it five ways and that the Weston Fire Department will not be included in receiving payments from that county fire fee. That's been our working assumption. But again, we don't ultimately control that. And then the last thing I'll just say is that I am not aware of any remapping that's happened with the first due map, at least in any recent. at least in any recent memory, the last several decades. I think that's all I have. Jimmy, is there anything you'd like me to speak to? Okay. Thank you.
Well, I don't think that you need to address that.
Okay, I support the fire department 100%. We always have. Well, my daughter does, is the only, I mean, I don't know much about it, whatever. But anyway, I support them. But what I think people are misunderstanding, I don't like paying higher bills either, but they have a substation now with the ambulance, did you all know that?
Yep.
Okay, and they do part of the EMS work too. So they had to get a, they had to get an emergency vehicle and stuff, they may not believe that with your place. I mean, the guys that are in there, from my knowledge, they all work outside too. So they're doing like two jobs.
I appreciate you trying to clarify that, but if, in the future though, if you're not scheduled to speak on the agenda, we can't permit that. No, I'm sorry, but thank you.
I will, I will answer one more question, just because Kathy reminded me. The monthly fire reports, so one, those are published annually in the newspaper. Monthly, they are in the agenda packet. Things that are in the agenda packet, when they're spoken verbally, very often make it into the minutes. But if they're not verbally recounted, they may not be in the minutes. So they may not be in the, the numbers of fire response calls may not be in the minutes every month, but they are in the packet every month and I can make that information available to you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have.
No, I'm sorry, we can't do that. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. You have minutes from the regular session and special sessions in July.
I'm sorry, you have minutes from the regular session on August 4th and the special session on August 19th. And I have to ask you to table the others again.
Okay. Send the modifications, there's a modification. Yeah, thank you. I'll second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve those minutes from the regular and special session on August 4th and August 19th with modifications. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, reports of city boards, commissions and outside agencies. The next cemetery board meeting, Tuesday, October 21st at 4:00. Historic Landmarks Commission, Thursday, September 11th at 4:30. The Planning Commission, Wednesday, the 17th at 4:00. Lewis County EDA, Wednesday, September 24th at 5:00 PM. Board of Zoning Appeals, Tuesday, September 9th at 6:00 PM. Code Appeals, September 11th at 6:00. Tree Commission, September 4th at 3:00. The Arts Council, September 9th at 6:00 PM. Land Reuse Agency, September 22nd at 5:00 PM. Housing Authority, September 17th at 4:30. And of course, the Neighborhood Watch Picnic on September 6th. Was that at 6:00 PM? Thank you.
And then, Kim, I have to correct the next one because I had the next meeting wrong in the minutes. The Solid Waste Authority will meet on October 15th at 6:00 PM at the Jaymoo Park Building.
Okay. Okay, and known vacancies to be filled, Board of Zoning Appeals, one position, one alternate. Solid Waste Authority, representative from the city of Weston and Housing Authority, two board seats. Next, the sanitary board report.
Kim, before you move on, would you like to do presentations?
Yes, that would be fine. Did you want to say a few words, Joe, about that?
Sure. So every year, the city of Weston participates in a hometown heroes project. And the, the project, of course, is putting up banners through town that honor military involved persons from around Lewis County. We offer the labor that it takes for free and then we keep record of the revenues and expenses related to the project. And then after the project is wrapped up, we make a calculation and figure out how much the project made and then we make that donation to the Mountaineer Military Museum. If you look in your packet, I believe it is on, starts on page 71 and then it ends on page 75. You will see the result of those debits and credits. And so at this time, we get to present a check for $4,035 to the Mountaineer Military Museum.
Barb, if you'll come forward, we'd like to present you with this check. And if we could have you take a photo.
I've never been up here before.
Yeah, please do, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for everything. Thanks for doing the project.
Fortunately, they're near. Thank you.
Yes, yes, she is.
Thanks. Just, yes.
Barb, would you like to say a few words?
For agreeing to this project, I would say the citizens of Lewis County, I mean, we had people out of state who support this and the residents that way. This means a lot, especially with the loss of my husband, the founder. And he was totally against this. Support of the museum, the project. I'm just humbled to be, so, whatever, to get that going. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Barb. Okay, next, sanitary board report.
Good evening. Y'all have my report in your packet. I don't see the need to really go into any great detail unless you have any questions or comments or anything you'd like me to address for that. Our meeting is next Monday evening at 4:30 and you guys are always invited to that, of course. But if there's anything you'd like me to address in the report, I'd be happy to do that for you.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any questions for Dee? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, finance report.
All right, I'll try to keep this relatively short. I'll give you a few, I think, important updates. One is that we've collected about 1,240 municipal fees so far for the year. So that's, that's about halfway collections. So we're back to our normal pace. You remember last year, we got the bills out late, so it was hard to tell where collections were. So we're back right on pace with what collections have looked like historically on our in-city municipal fees. On first due fire fees, so far, we've collected $18,766.42 in first due fire fees. So I think that is a lower collection, a low, if that were our regular monthly collection, I think that would be lower than we were expecting. But I'm hoping that because that was the first month, we see that increase a little bit over time. One thing I want to talk to you a little bit about was BNO taxes, because I'm going to admit to not know what I don't know. This time last year, we had collected about $184,000 in BNO taxes. This year, we've collected $168,000 in BNO taxes. So we're about $15,000, two months in, we're about $15,000 lower on that front than we would normally be at this point. Obviously, there's no direct connection between BNO taxes and other taxes like sales taxes and excise taxes. But all those other taxes are up for the same period while BNO taxes are down. I don't know why that is, I can't speak to why that is. But if I had to take a best guess, it's because our BNO clerk tax expert has not been in the building. So if you've ever wanted to put a value on what duty was worth, it was at least $8,000 a month. Is what early reports are showing. So I bring that to your attention just to say that it's in my attention as the next, next important thing that I probably need to have a good handle on and that we need to have better cross-training on across the city building. This month, I get to this in the city managers' report, but we spent some time this month reviewing municipal clerk things. And I think the next thing we're going to have to learn is BNO taxes. Let's see. That's all I have for major finance stuff. So then the next thing is, if you skip ahead to page 28, you'll see it was a great month for vacant structure revenues. And I should ask you to move $6,050 from the general fund to the vacant structures fund.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to move $6,050 to vacant structures fund. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to transfer $6,050 to the vacant structures fund. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then the check detail report got out of order in the packet, but that begins on page 49 and I'll ask you to approve that as well.
I'll move to approve. It's been moved in second to approve the expense check detail report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, anything else, Joe?
That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, street department.
You have a question, you want to have the answer then? Is this against stomach, the living part? Or not?
Any questions for Mike?
No, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next, police department report.
It's probably not his fault, it's probably mine, only in that.
Do you have anything from the peer liaison?
Well, we appreciate you, thank you.
Yes. Is Lindsay still out? Okay, good.
She really is, doesn't she?
Any questions? Fire department report. What about staffing?
Well, right now, we're doing pretty good. We're not better than we were, we only turn down five runs all month.
That's great.
That's still not three in medit class. Soon as they get graduated medit class, we'll have three medit.
I imagine the hospital's pleased with the response, they're getting their patients.
Those kind of EMS, they'll get called and if they turn it down, it's not going to make up for it.
Okay.
That is definitely up there, tremendously.
That's great.
And again, I can say, having had my aunt in the hospital all those times and, you know, one time they were three ahead of her to get to go home. And you guys came and it was great, not bad. So it's definitely a service to.
Questions for Chief Settle?
Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney report.
I think we have one at this time.
Okay.
There is. Kathy did put together a list of new business licenses in town, so there is a city clerk's report.
Okay.
And I believe that's on page 47.
All right, and city managers' report. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot all about you.
I, I actually, my August report will see the packet. Yeah. But the only couple of things I want to add on there. Demos, they should be moving in this week to start the festivities. And between this week and next week, they should be able to get the majority of that taken care of. I was going around and talking about all the things, but. And then I just wanted to remind everybody on the 13th, which is a Saturday, 10 o'clock, you're going to have the cemetery re-ification. And hopefully, that'll be a great turnout. We're actually, we're going to talk people on Warner Street. We've actually got three golf courts to haul the carts that Deerfield is letting us at no charge to shuttle people back and forth.
Thanks.
And everybody can fly up.
I have one question, the house up on South Main. Will that demo be taking place during school traffic times?
Well, they, they're aware of like that seven to eight period of buses are going in the like two, three period. And they should have all their equipment off of the road. I think it's plenty of road. And I talked to a lady at the daycare next door and I asked her, I said, when they're there, please still let the children outside. But that should be a very good one on the road. I told them make that a pilot.
I was just concerned about the traffic.
Yeah, that's a tight, scary, but I think they're, they did their trucks off the road there so that you're not blocking things in the curbs and all that stuff.
I apologize for skipping you. Any questions for Marty? Now, city managers.
Okay, I'll keep it real short because I think you all know what I've been up to. It's been answering a lot of questions about fire fees. And, and also just working through, you know, anytime you're working with a data set, you're going to have errors. And so we've been trying to correct things where we find errors and work with folks when they call in and say that, you know, this is an auxiliary building or I think I tore this building down in the last three years. Trying to work through those things and figure those out. And then the other thing you should know is that I've been working very closely with the housing authority this month. The housing authority is in a period of transition without an executive director. And they are still looking for two more board members. But I've been working closely with them, just trying to keep everything running smoothly down there at Chris Manor. So. That's all I particularly have.
Well, and I want to say I appreciate Sherri stepping in to keep an eye on things there too.
Yeah. Thank Sherri.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept all of the department reports. It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, under old business, consideration of West Virginia American Water Due Diligence of Sanitary System.
I'd like to move to table this indefinitely. I don't think there's any need to entertain this any longer after some consideration and talk with our fellow council people. I don't think that the city of Weston is interested in this matter.
Okay, we have a motion to table indefinitely. Is there a second?
My second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, consideration of Ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-five, creating a community development administrative support and communications director.
What changes were made, Joe?
Yeah, so before the first reading, the council made a few amendments. One was to the title. So it includes now the phrase administrative support, I think to reiterate the movement that we're moving towards that all personnel would be cross-trained in terms of admin. And then also to the job description on page sixty-eight, the phrase other duties as assigned was added.
So this would be a motion to have the second reading by title only.
Yes, I'll move to have the second reading by title only of Ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-five, creation of the position of community develop administrative support and communications director.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to have the second reading of Ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-five. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to do that reading, Joe?
Sure, I can read that. Ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-five, creating a community development administrative support and communications director. First reading by title only. Second reading by title only, I'm sorry. I'm not a very good city clerk.
That's. I'll entertain a motion to accept the second reading of Ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-five.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to accept the second reading of Ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-five, creating a community development administrative support and communications director position. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, under New Business. We've taken care of number A, the Mountaineer Military Museum donation. So next is consideration of event application from Lewis County Chamber of Commerce.
And that application is on page seventy-six of your packet. Mr. Bailey spoke to you about it earlier. It may include the closure of Water Street, but that's probably the biggest need there. I certainly recommend approval.
Can I ask a question? So we have to make sure, though, that Water Street is open when the parade starts, because you have to have that open route for emergency. So I think we need to put some clarification.
Okay, how long before? Okay.
I just know that from all the years of very.
Yeah. They want to have it before the parade. I think they're willing to wrap up before the parade. Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the event application from the Chamber of Commerce for eleven-twenty-eight-twenty-five?
I'm into.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, consideration of event application for Miracle on Main Street, October eleventh, twenty-twenty-five.
That's page seventy-seven, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to approve?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of contract with West Virginia Corps for seventy-seven thousand one hundred forty-five dollars. You want to talk about that?
Sure, so that, those cover pages start there on page eighty-one of your packet. This is our annual liability insurance. Underwriting usually tries to get this to us in June. It wasn't to me until just last week, which is why you're seeing it now. The price has gone up again this year. I think we, gosh, I don't remember if we budgeted seventy or seventy-five. So there probably will have to be a budget adjustment in City Hall before the end of the year to cover it. But this is the liability insurance that provided us a lot of coverage last year. I think last year it was well worth it.
This is the pool with assured partners or?
Correct.
Okay.
The seventy-seven thousand one hundred and forty-five?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve.
I'll say.
It's been moved in second to approve the contract with West Virginia Corps for seventy-seven thousand one hundred forty-five dollars. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, consideration of Christmas parade theme and date.
Yep, this year, the city administration recommends the theme Nutcracker, and that the parade would be on November twenty-eighth.
Thanks.
I move to approve the theme and the date.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved in second for the parade date to be eleven-twenty-eight, and the theme, The Nutcracker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of trick-or-treat schedule.
Oh, yes. I, it's on Friday this year, Friday, the thirty-first, and I think that would be a convenient time. We usually have it from six to seven on Halloween. Larry slept.
I think he was kind of expecting that maybe we would, and they would start at six-thirty. But we would still be six to seven.
Right. Well, I think that really presses people who get off work for.
I just wonder that way they didn't overlap.
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to move to have trick-or-treat night on October thirty-first from six to seven P M.
Okay, is there a second? It's been a motion in second to hold trick-or-treat on October thirty-first from six to seven. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And sponsorship of trunk or treat. What do we need to do there exactly?
Yeah, so that's on page eighty-five, and that's what Larry has turned in. Basically, it's an application to the Board of Ed for the City of Weston to use that space. Because officially, it is the City of Weston who has been hosting the trunk-or-treat. And so what that means is it's on our liability insurance. And also, I think there may be a rule about for-profit organizations using Board of Ed space, I'm not sure. But, so we've done this historically, and then I think at this point, this is one of those standing COIs that we have with West Virginia Corps. So it's already baked into the liability price that you just approved. So there's no reason not to approve it.
So they probably need your signature. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Will we be able to provide some police presence like we did last year?
I'll talk to Posey about it. I think we can probably be done.
Okay, is there a motion to take on the sponsorship of trunk-or-treat? It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next bid announcement for VPL shaft construction.
Yeah, so if you remember, this was one I told you that I had a handyman come and give a curbside estimate, and he thought originally it would be under five thousand dollars. So I said, oh, great, this is something I can move on without asking council to get involved. He came back and gave a formal estimate, and the formal estimate came in at sixty-four hundred dollars, so just above my threshold. But I think at this point, then, it is the best thing to do to go ahead and bid that out and make sure we're getting the best deal for the city. So I think there on page eighty-nine, I have the bid announcement that I'd like to send out. And then I think pages ninety through one-oh-six are just the specifications of what needs built there.
We entertain a motion to approve the bid announcement for the VPL shaft construction. Is there a second? It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Stephen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, consideration of bid announcement for paving contract.
I'll apologize on this one. I probably need you either to table this one indefinitely or do something else with it to get it off the agenda. I misunderstood the process when I put it on the agenda. We're going to be bidding out a tonnage rate, not for particular streets at this time. And then when we have the tonnage rate, then we'll set the particular streets. So because we're not setting the particular streets at this time, it's not been our practice to ask you to approve that bid. So we're going to go ahead and get that bid packet out there this week. And then we'll probably have a special session at some point to ask you to approve the particular streets.
So is there a motion to remove this item from the agenda? Definitely. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, consideration of parking designations on Second Street between Center and Court.
I'm going to go ahead and invite the Public Works Directors to speak on this one.
I've been approached by Cindy Schaefer about the church down here, Bishop Church. And they would like to move parking over by their church and then not have parking on, next to the parking lot by Saint Pat's. The only people that's going to affect would be Saint Pat's, and I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, you spoke with Father Ondack, and he said it would not hurt them one bit. So the only thing I can say is, if you all approve it, I could probably go ahead and do it, but I just want your all's approval that, yes, we could do that. I have a lot of people that's going to the church over there that's in wheelchairs and stuff like that, make it a little unhandy for them to get there. So I think we ought to accommodate that, and that's my recommendation is to do that.
I don't think so. It doesn't affect you personally.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Consideration of hiring announcement and procedures for finance manager.
So based on our conversations last month, I think it's appropriate this month that we would begin a search for a finance manager. I think, starting on pages one-oh-eight and I think through page one-ten, you see the job description. The job description remains mostly unchanged from the last time you posted it. The only thing I did change was at one point, we were calling it finance director in some places administratively, but in the charter, it says finance manager. So I've just made sure that it says finance manager everywhere so that everything matches the charter. And then the other, and then there's also an indeed announcement, because the indeed announcement always looks a little bit different than the job description itself, so that's also in your packet. Right. And then the last question there, because that is a political appointment, I'm looking to council's guidance on how you want to proceed with with interviewing and eventually hiring and appointing. And you don't necessarily have to share all those thoughts with me right now, but I think right now, we do want to get the position posted and get the search started.
So are you asking us to entertain a motion to?
Yeah.
End the?
To approve the job description as presented.
And the hiring announcement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So moved. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Discussion and consideration of action regarding Councilman Curtis, Ward Four, impending resignation and resulting vacancy. We'd really like for you to stay on at least another month. I think that would be okay because you're just now establishing your residency outside of the city limits. We, Councilman White and I have talked to the gentleman that expressed interest. And I believe that we'd like for him to attend a meeting so that the other counselors can can talk with him and get to know him before we make that recommendation. If that's okay. So I would like for us to to table this until the next regular meeting. If I can have a motion to support that.
I'm going to table.
Okay. It's been moved in second to table until the next regular meeting. The discussion and consideration of action regarding Councilman Curtis impending resignation and resulting vacancy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration of executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters.
Do you want to do your reports of council first?
Yes, if I can have a motion to move those items before the executive session.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so reports of city council. I have three things. Tomorrow, the State Treasurer will be in Weston, and he will be at the Coffee House at nine A M. And he will also be at the Senior Center at eleven-thirty A M. tomorrow. So if you don't have a chance to make the first meeting, please feel free to come out to the Senior Center. Next is the Brownfields Main Street Conference will be held next week in Morgantown. Since we're an on-street, an on-track program, we're required to at least attend the one-day Main Street. So we will be fulfilling our obligation there. And then Mrs. McVaney brought me a poster that was given to her by Fred Pringle. And it is National POW MIA Recognition Day, and that will be on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
West Virginia's first.
First. Thank you. So that date again is.
So like, don't forget to fly your flag. I am not on Friday, but on Saturday, I'm going to set up the missing man table display. And as part of that tradition, I'm going to add, remember, so Mr. McVaney, he's my missing man.
Thank you, Barb. Okay, we'll start with Ward Four. I was asked to do that.
Coming out this evening, and appreciate the Fire Department. I think we're headed in the right direction as far as the changes we're making. The changes that's been made in the city and throughout the county, I think, is leading us into a positive direction from where we've been. As they always say, there's never any change unless we make the change and work as a team together. So with that, I would like to thank Mike and Em for the fencing at the Loudly Park. Everything looks nice over there. I think we're starting to get some of the cats under control. I don't know if the cat lady's been over in McGary, but I think some of the residents over there have been working on some things on their own.
You shut them back and forth because the cats get a score after a little while.
Yeah, so. What's that? I'll move on to Ward Three.
Okay.
I just want to say, I had this whole big speech ready before your last meeting, so now I'm going to table that speech till the next meeting. But anyway, I'm glad you're beside me, another. Couple things I want to call attention to in the wards. We're still having several trash issues with people putting their trash can out all week and not taking it back to the house. with people putting their trash can out all week and not taking it back to the house. We do have an ordinance on that. I don't know if we could put a reminder in on Facebook or site about our trash. We've had several complaints about that. I appreciate the patrolling by our officers. I've seen you guys out a lot. I appreciate that. Plus, if anybody wants to be a police officer, we do have some openings in the police department. So contact chief on that. I would like to call out a couple things community-wise, because our next meeting, we will not be here before these events. Homecoming is scheduled. The parade is scheduled for October 2nd in downtown Weston, so our annual homecoming parade. I also want to, again, reiterate what Betty has said about the Fall Festival being downtown on October 11. That is usually a really nice event. A lot of people in the background putting that together to help bring people down to Weston. I know a lot of the business there that stay open benefit from the amount of people in Weston during that time. So I'd like to, you know, encourage people to come out and support our festival and our local event.
Ward 2.
All right, I'm without a mic, but I think I'm loud enough. So I want to say thank you to all the Weston Fire Department. I definitely appreciate all you, all you men and women. We're trying our best over here, as you can tell. And hopefully, we can come to some sort of compromise, if possible, you know. Thank you for everybody coming out and bringing your concerns to us. We like to hear that, so we have something to go off of, and so that you are represented. And thank you to all the law enforcement presence we've had recently. As you know, my ward is busy. And so we greatly appreciate that, when we've seen a more positive atmosphere on our side of town, and I greatly appreciate that.
Yes, certainly, I would like to thank our city staff, our office staff, the street department, law enforcement. I know you guys have been busy with law enforcement. I appreciate you. Of course, I appreciate the fire department, and thank you for attending tonight. I want to thank everyone else for attending tonight as well. A little reminder, on September 17th, we will be decorating for fall downtown. So of course, I can't do that without the help of our local FFA chapter, so they'll be downtown. If you have time to stop out and help us sometime between the hours of 9:00 and 2:00, or just stop by and say hello and visit with these young students and young adults. They're an impressive bunch. Last spring, when they came, they also brought along the fifth grade class from Roanoke School. And it was very impressive to watch the high school students take on the younger students and teach them a little bit about planting and beautification. It also gives them a sense of community and pride in their community, and they're really happy with what they have, their accomplishments and what they have done. They're doing things for their community. I'd also like to thank the chamber for their fresh ideas, and I know change is rough, but I'm willing to be on board and help you with whatever that you need. I appreciate you. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and legal. Is there a second? Okay, it's been a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great.
And I'm going to ask you to invite Kathy and probably Sam and Cassie.
Come on in. Hey, Barb. Yeah. Can you do that? I'm going to mention, if you could send it to my school email, and I'll try to set, we'll try to set up a table. The street department. For your missing man? Yes, yeah, we've done that before. You can give me the information.
While you're here, if you want to go ahead and sign for this. Are you just signing on the? I do.
I, I got it.
Okay. It was like, it was like, it's like, did I make Debbie mad or something? I remember, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. At least hiring somebody. That's three on there that they're going to hire again. I'm thinking of those for our tax dollars is going. I know. You're only one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Oops, sorry.